To exit executive session.
I'm going to.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And go ahead do the certification, Mr. Parsons.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that's the best of our knowledge. We only, the only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters were, excuse me, I'm sorry. identified in motion to go into the executive session where heard, discussed, and considered executive session. Any denumers what went under for?
Yes, please.
So we went under, under two point two dash three seven one one eight one personnel and two point two dash three seven one one eight eight.
Constellation with legal counsel? Okay. Mr. Sacagawea?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
And Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. Okay. We'll have the pledge. Uh, Mr. Sacagawea, would you care to do that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Brown, delegation is on the agenda this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair.
If you would, bow our hearts for a word prayer. Almighty God, we thank you heavenly father for the opportunity to be out tonight and freedom to do so. We thank you for our board and central staff and teachers and their desires to serve. We thank you for those being recognized tonight. Ask that you had blessed them, the classrooms they represent, the futures they hold. And most of all, we thank you, Lord, as we enter the Passover season, that you are the lamb whose death, burial, and resurrection makes everything possible. We ask these things in the name of Yeshua HaMashiach, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Any other delegations? Anyone else needs to? Okay. Any adjustments for the agenda, Dr. Brown?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we finalize our agenda this evening?
Make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Approval of board minutes of March third. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second for the March third minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Dr. Brown, this evening. We're kind of recognitions.
Yes, Madam Chair. We have quite the group tonight to recognize, to be proud of. And I ask Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Fletcher, to lead that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Madam Chair, members of the board. It is a pleasure tonight to bring several students to you. It's been a long dry spell, but it looks like this month and next month we're going to get it pop up here.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to invite administrative staff that's here from Lebanon High School along with students who won the Congressional App Challenge from District Nine. That's Ava Decker, Isabella Ashby, Theodore Hoyd, and Christian Music. If you all come forward with your parents, I'd like for the parents to join them. Come on up to the front. Y'all can just make a circle right through here, all right? And Ms. T is the sponsor. I believe she's here as well. Come on up, Ms. T.
Potts, thank you. Mr. Potts and Ms. T an opportunity to make some brief remarks about. So these students from Lebanon High School are part of Ms. T's engineering course and they're in the most advanced stage of that engineering course. And as part of that, they entered the Congressional App Challenge, which is Morgan Griffiths ninth district that they represent. And they were the champions from that district. This is a national contest that's sponsored by CGI. And Lebanon High School is super proud of these, these young men and women for what they've accomplished. Ms. T, you might be able to tell a little more about, I think they're going to be honored by CGI, is that correct?
Yeah. We're going to go to DC next week and stop at the CGI headquarters. They're around, have they invented for them up there? They were tasked with coming up with the idea for an app and then designing it, programming it, and make a workable app on the phone. And they have videos on social media. Then they had to make a video, which took us longer than everything to present that. But they came up with an app called Codication and it's for coding, programming languages and stuff where you can search. You can put in the language that you're using and what you want to accomplish and it searches and gives you back the code for that. Whereas now, I think when they had to do it on the computer and stuff, they have to sort through a lot of documents to try to find the right word, you know, and sort the different languages. So it's just a little simplified. So they did a great job. My job was pretty much saying, can you guys tell me what you're doing? I didn't really understand what they were doing, but they did a great job. So real proud of them.
We have a recognition for the team to be shared with the other students, to challenge the other students. This is a very aggressive program that we have, very challenging. And one of the things about having an elective is to have a dynamic instructor. We appreciate what could you do leading the team, okay? So we have, again, Lebanon High School, Congressional App Challenge team, our Russell County School Board in recognition of winning first place in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two state Congressional App Challenge District Council. Nice, sir.
You guys like to go ahead and get a little more because you'll get a picture right outside.
Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations, yes. Congratulations, yes.
Congratulations.
Congrat- congratulations. Congratulations, girl. Congratulations, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'll check in with you too. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you. How's it going though?
She's still pretty good. I'll talk to her again a little bit.
I hope she's playing bingo.
Hey, tell her that the duo is asking about it. Thank you.
Next from Lebanon High School, we have a student who won the award of Outstanding Actor at the VHSL Theater Festival, sponsored by Madison Huffman. Your parents in the front along with this student is the president.
Yeah, so Theater Festival is also known as One Act Play and it is, it is done in the fall. And Madison is an outstanding student at Lebanon High School. She has a fantastic e-commerce teacher that she loves dearly. But Madison is an outstanding actress. If you did not get a chance to see the play that she performed in, not only did she do outstanding drama work, but her vocal work and singing was outstanding. And I think that that represents exactly the kind of thing that Theater Festival is. While it may not occur like on a field, it is still a competition. Her team went to, was it Parisburg or?
Monticello.
Monticello and, and performed at the state championship. So it was, it's an awesome experience for them and we're, we're super proud of Madison.
Um, yeah, like Mr. Potts said, we are very proud of Madison and she was a big reason why that we went to the state championship this year. It's the first time that Lebanon High School has ever went to the state theater festival and I'm really proud of her. And I, we had a lot of actors who were recognized throughout coming up to it, but she was lucky enough to be named one of the four. They only named four out of the four schools that are up there. So I'm really proud of her and she, she's only a junior, so we're hoping for good things coming up.
Oh, great.
Well, we have a soaking appreciation from the board presented to Madison Huffman, Lebanon High School by Russell County School Board in recognition of winning Outstanding Actress in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, be at the CDR Group A State Theater Festival.
Look forward to seeing you again next year.
Come and see me next time.
Come back. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Our next group is also from Lebanon High School. They did really well at the state forensic competition. And we want to recognize these students, Brianna Johnson, Ellen Saunders, Carter Dillon, Madison Huffman, Emma Martin, Emmett Breeding, Cheyenne Ball, Kendra Horn, Rihanna Potts, and Gracie Ford. You come forward with your parents and refer into the sketch.
Come on up there.
You said you were filing a hat if you'd like. There's more in there.
Uh, so state forensics is a, it's an extension of drama. They perform individually or as duos. And this is the first time Lebanon has won a state championship in forensics. It's a tremendous accomplishment for our students. I, I say this from experience. My daughter is here. They work exceptionally hard. They work, excuse me. I'm a little proud of myself. They work as hard as any athlete. I'm a basketball coach. My kids practice every day. They practice everywhere. They work super hard on this. They're very deserving of the applause and the surrender.
Now, a lot of people don't know what we do, um, we say forensics, but it is a combination of public speaking, but also performing. So we work through different sections. But yeah, we've been working since December. Basically, as soon as we saw when accessible, we lived straight into forensics. And this year has had some challenges because most of these students had never performed in person until we got to state because the first couple rounds were virtual, which is a whole nother issue, especially with my duos who were trying to do movements together at the same time on two separate computers. If you zoomed before, you know, what a challenge that could be. So we, we were really, I, I can't tell you how proud I am of this group, how hardworking, exceptionally hardworking they are. I have some freshmen and sophomores on here who you would never know are underclassmen. So they are, they're a fantastic group and I love each one of them and I'm very, very proud of the things that they've done because they are, they are class acts, not just talented, but also just good people. So I'm happy to be with them.
For Gracie Ford, Gracie, third place humorous interpretation. For Rihanna Potts, third place serious dramatic interpretation. Cheyenne Ball. Emmett Breeding. Second place in cartoon speed. Kendra Horn. Second place, serious duo. Madison Huffman. Second place in storytelling. Emma Martin. Second place in poetry. Carter Dillon, excuse me, Carter. First place, serious duo. Rihanna Johnson. First place, original origin. Ellen Saunders, first place, serious. And then for the wall, Lebanon High School Forensics Team, first place, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, VHS Air Class One A Statement.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations, Rihanna. He is proud of you. We're proud of you, girl. She's taking all of that. Yeah. She is, that's right. Just like her mother. Congratulations. Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations. How pretty.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, great.
Congratulations, I'm glad, yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think that must be bad.
You just pitched ten for those.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do.
That's right.
And now from Lebanon High School, want to recognize students who placed in the state wrestling tournament. I'll ask those students, their parents, and the coaches to come forward. Cole Jesse and Colton Barton.
It got quiet. Must be gone.
High school's Cole Jesse entered a very good match.
Lebanon High has an outstanding wrestling program. I think that this is the seventh straight year that we've had a state champion. They've done a tremendous job. These young men work incredibly hard. A lot of times they're running around the gym while we're practicing basketball and my kids are jealous that they're not doing the kind of work that they're doing. So they, they work so hard and, and they train year round. I mean, and some of them, I mean, Mr. Barton came straight from soccer field, probably. They're multi-sport athletes and do a lot and they, you know, our wall, we're running out of room on the wall for our, our recogni- recognitions for wrestling. So they're doing a great job and we're really proud of them at Lebanon. Great job, Cole, Cole, Cole.
Uh, these guys work tirelessly. I mean, they're inside and outside the room constantly. Lung practices, a lot of power. Very proud of them. They're doing an excellent job.
For Colton Barton. Presented to Colton Barton, uh, for Le- excuse me, Lebanon High School, by Russell County School Board in recognition of fourth place, one hundred fifty-two pound weight class.
No. No. Maybe next year.
I, I, I said, hey, look, one fifty-two. One fifty-two.
At right here, Cole. Yeah.
Cole is still a wonderful accomplishment, okay? Fourth place, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Virginia High School League Group A State Wrestling. And presented to Cole Jesse, Lebanon High School, by Russell County School Board in recognition of winning first place at the one hundred fifty-two pound. There we go, weight class. VHSL Group A State Wrestling.
Dr. Brown hitting a two timer.
Are you running out of walls to hang all those weights? Going to have to build a shelf. Congratulations, congratulations to you. Thank you for what you do. Gentlemen, hey, Melvin. Good to see you. Congratulations. Good to see you, Harry. Good to see you.
All right, we're going to change schools now and go to Castlewood High School. I'd like to ask Mr. Robertson to come forward with the forensics team that placed at state. That would be Grace Nealon, Madison McConnell, and Skylar. Lost my flight. McCoy, Skylar McCoy. Y'all come forward, please. Mr. Robertson.
I think with most people here, forensics and things, forensic science and things of that nature. So for these kids, what they do is, is truly amazing. It's out of the comfort zone, challenged. We went into Cloverhill High School, about six hundred students that day, class one through six. So kids are running around everywhere. Parents are running everywhere. Coaches are running everywhere. And to, to see these young people go in these rooms after not being able to do it in person, to be online through the computer and then to walk into that high school with that many people there, I think it really speaks a lot to their accomplishments. And, and I, of course, I'm proud on a couple levels, not only of our students, but also the coach. Had to say that. I'm just, I'm just saying. Yeah, I'd really like a peaceful night.
Well, I too am so proud of this team and I'm proud of the company that we're in. I mean, with Lebanon High School, with Home Acre, Eastside, John I Burton. This part of state really showed up. Yes, we were embarrassed from this whole, this whole little corner, you know, and I, I hope that we made you all proud. Maddie and Grace did a humorous duo and I really wish that this would not be such a long meeting. I wish that I could say, you're on. They, they did a humorous duo and they portrayed first two toddlers who met and hated each other intensely. Uh, then they grew up and went through school age teenagers with attitudes. Eventually, the, the piece ended with their marriage and they're old, and they're an old couple at the, at the very end. Two foot, spent over, still in love, but it was, it was just the funniest thing. I saw it hundreds of times and I know that I liked it out loud every single time. This was Grace's first time on the team and, I mean, to have, to be a state runner-up is amazing. Maddie competed last year and was also a state finalist. She wasn't even in the class. She just said, hey, I want to join your team. She was amazing, amazing. And of course, this year too. Skylar was our only male on the team. All of the girls adopted him as their little brother. Uh, he has improved so dramatically. His category is called extemporaneous speaking. And I have told him numerous times, I do not have the courage to try what he does. I would never do it. You could not pay me to do it. He does research on very broad topics. Then when he gets to competition, he draws out questions. It can be anything. And he has thirty minutes to prepare. And these topics are very broad. I mean, one was Russia. I mean, they, you know, what, I mean, there's so many things to be said. I would not have this courage. Um, but this team is such a blessing to me. I'm so proud of them. And I'm thankful that I, I tell them all the time, I'm their number one fan. And I'm just thankful I get the opportunity.
We will start with Skylar, third place, extemporaneous speaking. Grace Nealon, second place humorous duo. And Madison McConnell, second place humorous duo. I'm sure you've got it recorded. If you could send that to us, we can try to put that on our website. If you guys would like, we can send it to more members. We'll get a picture right outside.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We can announce what you do. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Congratulations. 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 Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Next from Castlewood High School, the wrestlers had a, a great showing at the state competition and we're proud to present to you those winners. I'll ask the students, the parents, and the coaches to come forward, please. Adam Gibson, Jacob Maxfield, Slade Castle, Sam Gibson, Heath Sutherland, Brad Steff.
Hey, Bobby, you need something. Make it look good. Get down there.
What's the point there?
All right, so, uh, these six young men go to state tournament and here's where it's individual places here, which we're talking about. But these six young men go up there and bring home a fourth place overall, which I think is, is impressive. No wrestling is, is an individual, I mean, it's one-on-one. You can't look at your buddy and say, you know, it's his fault. I mean, if you get pinned, it's kind of you. But, you know, they, they went up there and pulled a fourth place. So it's six wrestlers. So I think that, that's incredible in itself. Bradley, you know, fifth, two twenty. Heath, one thirty-two, that's third. Sam, one oh six, third. Slade, one twenty-six, second. Jacob, one eighty-two, first. And Adam at one thirteen, which is a little odd because the past two years, Adam has been a state champion at one oh six. He goes up to one thirteen this year and no change, state champion again. Three-time state champion, two different weight classes. Pretty good stuff. I'm also proud of these young men and what they accomplished. I say just the, the determination, the self, the discipline that you have to have to do this is impressive in itself. So, Mr. Castle?
I'd just like to say, Bradley, they work hard as a team. I think it showed direct when they came back with the fourth place title. Individuals first, second, third, and a fifth place. I'd like to see the state champions out there and then champion. Most of all, I'd like to compare them for when they get out of school once a year. I believe they're disciplined. I've got a good group of kids that are very disciplined. I didn't capitalize on it, but we even went to one meet and parents from another school sent home a letter complimenting our boys on how behaved they were. sent home a letter complimenting our boys on how behaved they were, and how well mannered, and how they helped out elderly get to their seats, and I'm proud of them. So, I'd also like to say, I've got 12 other wrestlers that's not here, but I'd like to give them a hand for helping get these boys where they're at. It took the whole team, and if the others didn't push and get them where they're at, they couldn't be here. And also, I'd like to thank my two coaches. That's my left and right arm, good work. Thank y'all.
Brad Steff, presented to Brad, Castlewood High School, by Russell County School Board in recognition of fifth place in the 220 weight class.
Bradley was a first-year wrestler, too.
Very good. Sam Gibson. Presented to Sam Gibson, Castlewood High School, by Russell County School Board in recognition of third place in the 305 weight. 106 weight class, 2021-2022 VHS SL Group 187. Heath Sutherland. Heath, presented to Heath, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of third place for the 132 weight class. Slade. Slade Castle from Castlewood High School. Presented to Slade, excuse me, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of second place in the 126 weight class. Presented to Adam Gibson, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of first place in the 113 weight class at the 2021-2022 VHS SL Group 180 State Wrestling Tournament, third time. Presented to Jacob Maxfield, Castlewood High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of first place in the 182 weight class at the 2021-2022 VHS SL Group 180.
I bet he's like a snake, he just slivers through. Congratulations, Adam. Congratulations. Proud of you, buddy. Congratulations. Thank you, and congratulations. With that accomplishment.
Grandmothers are making tomatoes.
Congratulations. Thank you, Coach, appreciate you. I'm sorry.
All right, and now we have Homeacre High School. We're going to recognize their students and placing them for forensic state competition. I'd like to invite Mr. Bush and Natalie.
Mr. Bush.
And chairman members of the board, glad that you are recognizing Natalie tonight. She's only her second state champion in forensics, and we're very proud of her. I'm very proud of what she's accomplished, not only individually, but student at Homeacre High School. She exemplifies what we want to see in a student, both academically and in her extracurricular activities. Let your coach know a little bit, a little bit about how she got first place in impromptu speaking at the state tournament.
Absolutely, we're super proud of Natalie. This is her fourth year participating, she's participated since the eighth grade. She actually traveled to the state tournament with her brother Mitchell in the seventh grade, so she's been forensically with us for a long time. And I'm glad to hear from all you other forensics people that you also have to explain to people it's not about problem solving, because we haven't done that in a long time. And anyway, Natalie is one of the hardest workers that I've ever had. Her category is called impromptu speaking, in which she has seven minutes to look at a topic, or she looks at three topics, picks one, writes a speech, and delivers it, all within seven minutes' time. So, again, that takes a lot of fortitude, a lot of poise.
Seven minutes.
And I will have to say, yeah, I've had many students do impromptu, and it's usually of the kind of student who can just jump up and make up stories and things, you know, and that's the students who gravitate toward it. Natalie is one of the most organized, formulaic, hardest workers I've ever seen. She does not wing it. She has a binder, a folder, she has speeches already pre-planned for different categories, she researches current events to stay up to date. She puts the work in, and she earned her first-place title this year. And Ms. Lester and I are super proud of her, and I want to add, this is her third time. She's the first student we've ever had who got to participate in the state tournament three times in a row. The first year, in her ninth-grade year, she earned a spot at the state tournament, which unfortunately was canceled due to the pandemic. The next year, she got to go, but it was a virtual tournament in her sophomore year, so it wasn't quite the same, but she still placed third that year in the state. And so, this year, it just felt like her crowning moment, we've been working towards. She got to go to the in-person tournament and place first in impromptu speaking, and we're just tremendously proud, and she's a junior, so hopefully, we can have a four peat, a four full, a tetrad, whatever you call it. So, we're just super proud of Natalie.
Presented to Natalie Campbell, Homeacre High School, by the Russell County School Board in recognition of winning first place in impromptu speaking at the 2021-2022 VHS SL Class One State Forensics Tournament.
Congratulations, I want to say that four peat.
Congratulations, Natalie. Thanks for what you do with them.
Congratulations, I want to say that four peat, in spite of your principal.
Congratulations, thanks for what you do with the students.
Hey, ladies, you all, proud of her. Thank you for coming. Hey, how are you doing, Robert? Good to see you. Good to see you, Mr. Bush.
All right, and finally, we want to recognize our employees of the month. We had one employee that we honored last month that wasn't able to come, so I'd like to invite Lakin King from Lebanon Elementary School. She will come forward, and Miss Long is not able to be here, but I, oh, there we go. Thank you. All right, I'd like to read to you a little bit about the recommendation that came with Ms. King's nomination. My son is a fourth-grade student at Lebanon Elementary School. I am nominating Lakin King, LES proud professional, for all the assistance she provides my son and his fellow classmates. He is often pulled into a small group setting for the purpose of receiving additional instruction in reading and having text read to him when completing coursework and assignments. Ms. Lakin, as my son refers to her, should be commended for the awesome job she's doing. Since the beginning of the school year, my son has shared how much he likes and appreciates Ms. Lakin. He describes Ms. Lakin as friendly, positive, and helpful. She is someone who is dedicated to providing assistance when her students need it. He has mentioned how she moves from classroom to classroom throughout the day, helping other students. I've never met Ms. Lakin, but based on my son's daily reports of his school day, it is obvious that she is working hard every day to ensure the students she has assigned to work to succeed. She cares, and she shows. Ms. Lakin deserves recognition as support staff of the month.
Congratulations.
And now for the March Employees of the Month, I'd like to invite Kelly Coffey from Castlewood High School. And Jamie Gilbert. All right, Kelly Coffey, she goes above and beyond to help out each child she's working with. She makes sure each child's needs are met and does what needs to be done to help each child each day. She also makes sure wherever the class goes, she also makes sure wherever the class goes, they are clean. She also makes sure wherever the class goes, the spots they are at are clean and put back before they all leave. There we go. She's hardworking and driven to help out past her job title. No mountain is too big or too small for her, too cheap what needs to be done. Congratulations, Ms. Coffey. Let me have a few notes from the second nomination for her. Ms. Kelly is bright, energetic, hardworking. Every morning, she greets the students with a smile and a compliment. She goes out of her way to make every student feel welcomed and safe. She's currently working as an aide in the TMD program at Castlewood High School. She is willing to do whatever it takes to help her students, recognizing Kelly for her hard work and dedication at her job will allow her to know that the school appreciates her efforts. And Teacher of the Month is Ms. Jamie Gilbert. She's assigned, I think, at Castlewood Elementary, but she works throughout the county for our students who struggle with English, that are limited English speaking skills. So, she travels around a lot that is based at Castlewood Elementary. I would like to recommend Jamie Gilbert for Teacher of the Month. She's helped so many students that I've had over the years learn to read, listen, write, and understand the English language. She plays an important role in identifying and addressing the students' needs. She provides one-on-one tutoring to students who need intervention. She evaluates their progress, comes up with strategies to make learning more fun. She constantly checks on the progress of her students and always ensures that they have what they need in order to be successful. She's always willing to assist me in the classroom whenever needed. I can honestly say that she's made a difference in the lives of the ESL students because I have seen their progress grow from year to year. She also travels to several other schools in the county to assist other ESL students. She deserves this honor because I feel she is a valuable asset to Russell County Public Schools.
Yep, yep, all to cross.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Jamie. Thank you. Hey, Dr. Brown, is that all your recognitions?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, take us down to the consent items for the board.
Okay, do we have approval for the bills? Do we have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, all in favor. Okay, Dr. Brown, we have the retirements.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Pull this list up, try to make that a little larger, but list of retirements, resignations for the board's consideration tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion that we approve resignations and retirements?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, to approve the resignations and retirements as presented on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Sakawija, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dr. Brown, it takes us to new hires.
Yes, ma'am, Chair, I have a small list for board's consideration tonight.
Okay. Okay, if... If I have board approval or a motion to approve four through 11?
I'll move.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sakawija, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, if it is pleasure of the board, we'll take recommendation number 16, Tasha Osborne, Finance Director. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Sakawija?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Employee 17, Greg Mullins, for supervisor. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sakawija. Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, I better abstain, I guess. Thank you. Okay, recommendation number 18, Lila Jenkins, supervisor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Sakawija?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
No.
Mr. Ball?
I'll have the discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Ms. Hooker if she knew what she knew now, if she would make the recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll vote no.
Okay. Mr.?
Gibson.
Gibson.
Yes.
I was looking at you, but I couldn't figure your name out. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, employee 19, Jared Sparks, principal at Castlewood High School. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Sakawija?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
I will abstain.
Okay, Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And congratulations, Jared, wherever you are.
Working a ballgame.
Working a ballgame. And I would like to say...
You have another one, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, before we go on.
I'm sorry.
I would like to say, thanks to each and everyone that took their time. And it takes time to write emails and it takes time to write letters. And I appreciate any time receiving, receiving that from students, staff, or whoever. So, thank you for what you did with them, okay? Okay, employee line twenty, Paula Banner, A Placement Director, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Mr. Sakawija?
Yes.
This is for Paula. Mr. Bostick?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Dr. Brown.
All right, Madam Chair, and I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, no problem. I mean, I just wanted to, to, I'm sure other members got the same information and I do appreciate the community taking time to tell us.
The board made a good decision.
Who they like and whatever.
We have one action item, Madam Chair, for the board's consideration. We shared this with last month's meeting. We need to approve the last day of school. Again, with the opportunity to use, excuse me, remote instructional days, a waiver was provided to us and we're able to do this with nine days this year. Miss, we actually could have went up to ten and even fifteen. With that being shared, Madam Chair, we're looking at May the 25th with an early dismissal at 11 o'clock for the last day of school with the board so chooses.
Very good, that's probably one of the earliest...
Yeah, it's probably about a week early.
Yes, that's great. Do I have a motion that we approve May 25th as last day of school?
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, to approve May 25th as our last day at school.
Thank you, Mr. Sakawija, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor? Okay, Dr. Brown, to our first reading of policies.
Yes, Madam Chair, for the information item tonight, we do have first reading of policies. Again, no action is needed tonight by the board, just simply, again, I guess, formal sharing that they are available for the board to review. We do receive, as members of the Virginia School Board Association, policy updates periodically. These are available for the board's consideration. And again, no action is needed tonight, but we will be looking at this with the, may it be?
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Brown. Okay, does, we need a motion to, we see the sales tax. We don't have to have a motion, but it is 358,280.66 ADM, ASO 228, it's 3241. Is that right, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us down. Anyone have any question on the maintenance report? Eric Spina to report. Future agenda items, Dr. Brown?
Again, Madam Chair, we'll have the reading of the policies. Second reading as an action item next month for the board's consideration.
Okay. Also, tomorrow will be the recognition of our business partners and you might want to address that, Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair, tomorrow at noon at the Government Center, we'll have our annual luncheon, which we haven't had the last two years. But we have that available this year. We're looking forward to thanking our business partners for the money that they bring forward and the partnerships that we've been able to develop with Russell County Public Schools.
Okay, that'll be 11:30 to 1:00 and board members, if you can make it, that would be, that would be good. Also, board members are invited to Castlewood High School around 10:30 Thursday. And this is for their beta. Anybody that can, any of the board members, you're welcome to come for their beta orientation that day. Does any board member have anything they would like to bring up this evening for Dr. Brown?
I would like to thank Lebanon Primary School for our supper, our meal tonight. Ms. Sykes and her staff, it was delicious.
It's hard to beat, in cold beans. They're good for breakfast, I'd say. Next school board meeting will be May the 5th. We'll be back on our Thursday, 5 o'clock. Do we need to mention Dr. Brown for the, let's see what that was? For error, do we just need to continue this meeting for April the 28th because of the virtual gathering? For the art?
Would it be a VSBA event and so forth?
Okay.
No.
Okay.
We shared that with the public.
Okay.
You're welcome to come if you'd like to sit in on it.
Come and check out the art, it's always, that's probably one of the more exciting meetings that the VSBA has. I hope some of the Russell County students win that. They have done excellent in the past. Okay, does anyone have anything tonight? Okay. All right, Wayne, I'm waiting on you. Thank you, do we have a second?
All in favor?
All in favor. And any ones to stay here, opposed it, and we'll turn the lights off on you.